I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, February 20th. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I would like to say thank you for all the rain we've had, but it's got to stop. Okay. If Edison found a way to trap all that water, then that would be very cool. If we could please have the roll call.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponse?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Mary Schickling is absent.
Okay. Announcements or written communications?
Just a quick announcement, the Avalon general municipal election has, is consolidated with LA County and the presidential primary election on March 5th. The Catalina Country Club will be the designated vote center for this election. The vote center will be open on March 2nd through March 4th from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. On Election Day, which is March 5th, the voting center will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. LA County has already been begun mailing out ballots. Please remember, you can return your ballot at the post office, the drop box outside of Avalon Library, or any vote center or drop box in LA County. Today, February 20th, is the last day to register to vote for this election. You can register online at www.lavote.gov. The county also has a same-day registration process for the day of the election. You can find details and what kind of documents you need to qualify for same-day voter registration at lavote.gov. And this is also just a general reminder to city council members, planning commissioners, city contractors, department heads. It is FPPC season, please complete your Form 700 and any additional schedules that apply to you and file these with the city clerk's office, or you may also file them directly with the FPPC. All forms are due April 1st.
Thank you. Okay, Department Head? Department Head reports.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Orange Car Star and Harbor Master. Patrol continues to stay busy working around the clock, dewandering the skiffs and watching over the boats. During the early morning hours this morning, a large 65-foot ferro cement sailboat did slip anchor and grounded itself off Hamilton Cove Beach. That's just northwest of Avalon Harbor. The two occupants and the dog were able to abandon ship using their dinghy. No injuries were reported from this incident. The U.S. Coast Guard and the Department of Fish and Wildlife are working with the owner of the vessel on possible salvage operations. A special thanks to Baywatch Avalon and Avalon City Fire Crews for their early morning response to this incident. Avalon Harbor Patrol will continue to monitor the situation as it evolves. Since my last report Tuesday, February 6th, patrol moored 112 boats for a total of 1,197 nights. Patrol warned or advised nine individuals of municipal code violations, issued one citation, and assisted Baywatch four times, assisted the public 36 times, and completed 123 security checks of the facilities and surrounding waters. Also, Mayor, regarding that cake up there on the podium, I just want to say that February 20th, 1914, Resolution Number 19 appointed the first Harbor Master to the city of Avalon. His name was Lawrence Casey, and so this would be the 110th birthday of the Harbor Patrol.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thanks to Assistant Harbor Master Kevin Schmidt for making sure that those cakes arrived on time, and they're quite beautiful, so.
They really are. It says, "Happy Birthday, 110th Anniversary, Avalon Harbor Department, Established February 20th, 1914." Anybody can do 100. So I don't know when we're going to consume this, but I was thinking personally. And you can hear the smell of chocolate. And Val is here. Okay. All righty.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Staff, Michael Allegria, Fire Chief. The next two days, we have both reserves and full-time staff going over to utilize our regional trading center in Long Beach and do some live fire burns. Next week, we're hosting a Cal State class on rules and regulations of fire prevention, a lot of new updates that have come out, started January 1st. We'll be having some guys from Sacramento come down and teach us next weekend. And that's it.
Well, excellent. Training and education is very imperative, so thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Sergeant Grayson Klein, Avalon Sheriff's Station. Since our last meeting, we've had 41 calls for service, 73 observations by the deputies. We're currently in the dog days of winter, it's extremely slow. Hasn't been anybody taken to jail the last two weeks. And it's also retirement season for Sheriff's Department. So we got one deputy retiring in March, Dale Lovick. And he works day shift, he's got 34 years on, and we're currently, Matt and I are bringing over some individuals, trying them out and making sure they're a good fit for the community before we go ahead and take them. So we've got one coming this weekend, work a couple shifts, and then the next weekend. So we're not just taking anybody, we want to make sure they're a good fit for our community.
Great, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kelly Robuffo from Sagecrest for the Planning and Building Department. Not too much is different from the last report you got last month. We're currently working on the general plan and housing element annual reports, which are due to the state April 1st. You will be seeing both of those at the second meeting in March, as the state does require that we review those with the council before we submit those final reports. We're continuing to work on housing code updates in conjunction with the city attorney's office. As I mentioned, we have a number of line items that we need to make to comply with the current state of California standards for housing. So you will probably be seeing those later in the first half of the year, think about April, May, when we'll start bringing those to Planning Commission and then to you for final adoption. As far as applications go, we are currently processing three CUPs. Two of those are for ABC licenses, and one is to, for the Immersed Education. Over near the Gulf Gardens, they would like to become permanent fixtures opposed to temporary. Other than that, I just wanted to quickly introduce our President, Amy Vasquez, from Sagecrest, she's out here this evening since you do have our contract on the agenda for consent. So I wanted to introduce her really quick. I think she did not get to meet you last year, since the weather made it so she could not make it over on the boat. So I just wanted to introduce her really quickly as well.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to say?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for welcoming Kelly with open arms. She absolutely loves doing work for the city of Avalon. Obviously, we're here tonight because our contract's up for extension. So if you have any questions on the company, I'm happy to answer for you. So it's a pleasure being here, thank you.
Thank you, Amy, okay, we'll see you later.
Good evening, Council, Matt Baker, Finance Director. Last meeting, I mentioned that we were planning on bringing the audited financials at this meeting. Unfortunately, I didn't make the deadline on the agenda, but we should have everything ready to go for the next city council meeting. Other than that, as a revenue update, December really followed kind of the trend for the first half of the fiscal year, and by that I mean TOT revenues were down slightly compared to last December, but still above where we had budgeted. Cross-channel warfage was flat with December of last year, but cruise ship revenues and nightly moorings were both up in the harbor. So I'll have a more detailed report circulating out to council, but kind of follows more of the same from the first half of the year.
Great, any questions? Okay, thank you, Matt.
Good evening, Council. Want to give you an update on some of our programs. We're currently overrunning Tremont Hall with program classes. Mondays, we have free mariachi classes taught by Fernando Gonzalez. Also, on Mondays and Wednesdays, we have folklorical dancing going on in there. Tuesdays and Thursdays, kids at play drama classes for kids 8 to 14. Wednesdays and Saturdays, we have karate classes. And Friday is our newest classes, Dance Tech, which is ballet, tap, and contemporary dance. There is currently about 50 kids signed up for that class, so we're really happy to see that one grow. There's currently classes every day of the week but Sundays, where we currently have our youth soccer programs going on up at JMF. And starting first weekend in March, we will be up at the Avalon High School with our youth basketball program running at that time. We are also currently tightening up our code of conduct for participation, because we want to crack down a little bit more on the bullying situations here on the island. Although we have not had any situation in our program this year, it's been pretty clear of any bullying situation within our program, but we're still having issues of kids not signing up for programs in fear of what is happening outside of our programs. If you're trying to figure out what that means, it means that they're being bullied outside somewhere else, and then they see, they know kids are signing up in our program, so they're not coming. So we want to tighten the language up, so that we are a little stronger on the bullying and what we can enforce with that, as well as so when the kids see that, that at least the parents will know that their kid is safe in our program. And hopefully, we can then influence what happens outside of our program. Kids Baseball has finished pouring a slab of concrete in the corner of the courtyard behind the home dugout to support a shed that will house their equipment, as they have been looking for a new home for their shedding equipment. As the oldest youth program on the island, and although it is a private organization, we at the city are in full support of helping Kids Baseball have a home to grow, as well as share in the growth of our community's kids. We are again looking for a new vendor for JMF, Joe Machado Field, and we'll be going out to RFP for it. But until we have a new vendor, we will enter a temporary contract with the school to sell concessions during sporting events as a way to fundraise for them. And then March 6th, we have the Catalina Marathon is back, with runners starting at two harbors, coming in, finishing down Sumner Avenue. There is also a 5K and 10K and kids run in the morning. They are tracking to have around 1,200 participants between all the races, which is a welcome sight to local businesses during the off-season. You can still sign up at runcatalina.com if you want to be part of one of the best marathons in all the country. Quick 4th of July update, we have secured the USC ban, and as well as the accommodations for the USC ban, as well as the food to feed the USC ban. That's all taken care of at this point. We just received today the bids and contracts for the barge, as well as the fireworks, and so we will have that for you at the next council meeting to approve, as well as a theme for it. So we'll reveal a theme at the next council meeting in March. Any questions?
I have a question. I imagine when you do this code of conduct, there are consequences for bad behavior?
Well, we'll make sure, you know, because in the code of conduct, it says that you shouldn't behave in a certain, in a certain way. But we actually do not have in our code of conduct what would happen if you behaved in that way. And so instead of giving warnings, it's one of those, I think what bullying has gotten so, from my understanding, it has gotten bad, pretty bad, that I would love to do a warning and then free from the program. You'd be released from the program. And so just wanted to make sure that we have something that's across the board, so whoever we do have working those events and those programs, they know exactly where they can take that and what they can say, so we're not getting conflictual, you know, leadership on that.
Is there any like coordination with the schools, because those kids are also go to the school? And do they have such a thing as a code of conduct, conduct with any consequences, or?
I'm not sure.
It might be interesting to?
I'll check in, I'll check in with them.
Because I mean, if you're both on the same page, it would be really nice. I know the school has, anyway, that would be.
From my understanding, because I'm on the site council, it's something I actually asked about. And they said at this moment, they're following the, like a restoration program, and that's what the district wants.
Yeah, yeah, they try, okay. Well, let's hope that works. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. It's vehicle season right now, so just a reminder to come in and register your vehicle. You can pre-apply online, if that's helpful. So far, Rosio and Miguel have processed over 300 auto wet permits in 80 full-size. It sounds like it's a lot, but it's not really, so. Come on in, it was a slow day today, so don't be shy. The Household Hazardous Waste Event was on Saturday, and we had a good showing. Julie from CRNR will be doing a presentation, so I won't steal her thunder, but it was a great, great event. Last week, I met with Supervisor Han's office regarding the landfill expansion project. Great group of people, they'll be really good advocates for us as we move along through the approval process with LA County, so I very much appreciate that. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager report?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. A couple agenda items, just want to point out that the Catalina Express has canceled their public presentation tonight due to weather. We've rescheduled them for March 5th. And then also the closed session that was scheduled for this evening's council meeting has been, will be rescheduled for March 5th. Other items that we have tomorrow night, we have a Planning Committee meeting scheduled. Just two items on this, but one of those items is a discussion regarding transient rental moratorium. Really, the goal of this is to roll out the survey results, have a limited discussion on next steps with Planning Commission. We are not asking them at this time to have any specific recommendations to council. We want them to have this information, they'll digest it, we'll come back with them in March. At that time, hopefully, we'll get some recommendations from Planning Commission to recommend to council, where council can discuss it in April and May. That's the current agenda. Tomorrow's meeting, because we have to start it at 4 o'clock, because of some tight scheduling that we have here in council chambers, which is my next item. And that's the reason we're starting at 4, but we're timing it for the item that has been posted and published, we'll start right at 5 o'clock. That being the one issue for Planning Commission to act on, the other is just a discussion item. So the moratorium's been fairly quiet, the discussion's been fairly quiet. We're trying to get that back out, both here with Planning Commission and ultimately with council. So we have that tomorrow, and then also Congressman Robert Garcia is holding a town hall in here at 5:30 tomorrow night. I know some of you will also discuss this, and that's why we're getting out of here by 5:15, 5:20 tomorrow at the latest, in order to allow his staff to get in here for their town hall. So we're very happy to have him here, we're looking forward to that. He's been very supportive of many of the CIP projects we've had on the island. So welcome and thank you to Congressman Garcia. I don't know it's been discussed, but we have the harbor cleanup this Saturday on the 24th. So please get out there and support that. The transit contract, we are hopeful, best case, to have that in front of you tonight. We weren't able to pull that off. We have a few things, we're finalizing with them. The good news is, we're still on track, they're still on track to start April 1st. So there won't be a delay in it, but again, we'll have that before you at your next meeting. Dave Hart mentioned RFP for JMF food operations. That will be available at City Hall no later than Monday and online. So anybody that's interested in that, please either check the city's website or come in and pick it up. We encourage as many applicants as possible. And then finally, Sagecrest mentioned that their contract is up for renewal tonight. I did want to just briefly mention, I know we brought it out in the staff report, but Sagecrest, over the last year, has really, in my opinion, stabilized our planning and building department. And they've done this while reducing the overall costs that we're running in that department. You know, we appreciate certainly Kelly, but all of her assets that she can tap into at Sagecrest, and that's what makes this really work for us. So, you know, if council has any questions of them, we do have that on consent, but I did want to bring that up before we got to that item. Thank you.
Okay. City Attorney?
Just as you're filling out your Form 700s, we have two paralegals whose job is just to help fill out those Form 700s. So just contact our office and we can put you in touch with them.
All right, thank you. Oh, okay, thank you.
Hi there, can everyone hear me?
Weather casualty, yes.
Oh, good. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Members, Jackie Cordaro, Public Works Director. I'm so sorry I can't be there to share cake with you all, but I'm so grateful I wasn't on the 6:00 a.m. boat this morning. Some quick public works updates, we're working really closely with the Community Services Department, getting JMF ready for baseball season. Also, Pebley Beach Road is doing well so far, fingers crossed. We are anticipating to open it tomorrow. Public notifications were sent via our text message alert system and social media. If anyone would like to sign up for those text message alerts, please sign up on the city website under Alerts and Notifications. Yesterday, we received an inch and a quarter of rain.
Hold on.
I think another, yeah, quite a bit in a short amount of time. More to come, as another big cell is approaching tonight. We will continue to monitor our hillsides, the wastewater treatment plant and all the drains, and we'll be actively doing post-storm cleanup in the next few days. We're, next, we're, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's not you. Okay, go ahead.
We're making parking for our gem vehicles and installing the charging stations behind City Hall. We're working on that. We're also continuing to do improvements on City Hall, adding new meeting space area and areas for staff. And then finally, public work staff is completing their annual, I'm sorry, their, every two years, sexual harassment training, and are also participating in two new heavy equipment trainings in the beginning of March. Thank you so much for getting that training approved last city council meeting. And that is it, on my end.
Okay, any questions of Jackie? All right, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember report?
Can I go first?
Yes.
Because everybody's taking my thunder. Just a reminder, Rotary is also sponsoring the underwater cleanup this weekend. It should be fun, I can't wait to be there at 7:00 in the morning.
You going in?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm sitting at the registration table selling raffle tickets at 7:00 in the morning. And then, something that Dave had brought up, Dave, Public Work, Community Services, the bullying. I'm really disappointed in my community, in that there is a person on this island who does a lot of cleanup that he really doesn't have to be doing, and he's being bullied constantly. Mr. Tony, Mr. Tony wants to leave the island and go live with his parents because he doesn't feel safe here. And what bothers me is that complaints have been taken to the school, complaints have been taken everywhere, and nothing has happened. That is ridiculous in this community. I thought this community was better than this, and it just, it just breaks my heart that that's what's going on. That there are no consequences for bullying at the school really burns my butt on that. I grew up in an age where there were consequences for our actions, and we are now in an age where there are no consequences. Nobody does anything, and we need to stop this stuff. That, I have a special needs nephew here on the island that may have to at some point deal with this, that's, I just can't, I just can't understand it. It just really bothers me. So that's my rant on that. And on a positive note, for those of you who know my sister Eric, or my sister Sarah, sorry, I'm upset. For my sister Michelle and my brother-in-law Eric, their daughter Sarah and her husband Stephen have welcomed a new member to the family, and I would like to welcome Kayden Thomas Rementer to the world. So it's exciting that we have a new, a new little baby in the family, so, thank you.
Okay.
I actually, I think, have nothing to report. I have a couple meetings coming up after our next council meeting, so.
I have a couple things. It's been busy, but a good busy, of course. I did meet with the new field deputy from the Union Launa, 1309. They represent the laborers at the quarry. They just wanted to introduce themselves. They had some ideas they wanted to share for the future, and one of them being internships and also offering classes for existing employees. And then we also met with Congressman Robert Garcia's office, me and a couple other council members, city staff, to try to help with the town hall for tomorrow. Tomorrow's kind of a busy day for me, so I'll be running around trying to do the best I can. In the morning, I have a SUE meeting with Water Education for Latino leaders, and then that evening I have site council, oh, site council was postponed, sorry about that. Because we have a Harper Regional, they'll be having a meeting at the school that's at 6:00 p.m. And they're here to discuss their self-determination program. And then after, I'll be at the town hall. And I'm gonna be probably late, but I'm gonna do my best to also attend the Women's Forum meeting. I believe Senator Lena Gonzalez is doing her best to reschedule her island visit. And one of the things that I know that the topic was tonight was education and the children, so I've kind of made sure to voice that that campus is a priority for myself. And so she's reached out to the Superintendent of Education. His name is Tony Thurmond, and so he will be with her.
Great.
Once they're here.
Good job. Excellent. I'll see you at the harbor cleanup at 1:00. Okay. All right, presentations. Starting with Julie.
So do we have Julie queued up?
I'm here. Good evening, everybody. Share my screen real quick. All right, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
All right, well, good afternoon, Mayor, Marshall, and City Council. I apologize, also due to the weather is why I'm not in front of you, but obviously here on the screen. So I just wanted to provide our annual update. So I just wanted to provide our annual update, just what's been going on with recycling and other programs, one of them being what Jocelyn mentioned. Okay, there it goes. All right, so I want to talk about our HHW and e-waste collection event from this past weekend. Want to talk a little bit about bulky item collection, a waste and recycling characterization we did on the recyclables we collect on the island, and just to refresh our What Goes Where. So to start, from eight to 12 this past Saturday, we had an HHW and e-waste collection event, which I think was very successful. We had 46 customers come through, and items that they dropped off were such as paint, pesticides, propane tanks, light bulbs, a lot of fluorescent tubes, a lot of batteries. We took a lot of batteries in, TV monitors, appliances, printers, cell phones and microwaves. Here are just some pictures I wanted to share, so in case you weren't able to come by. But you know, the more, the majority of the folks came through in golf carts. We had a few people come through in trucks. But I think what made this event successful is that we had several people ride through on their bicycles, bringing in batteries for us to take. One of the photos you could see pictured here is a gentleman that came in with a little dolly that brought also some electronic waste, some cell phones and batteries. So I think that Jocelyn and I have not spoke about this yet, but I definitely think at a minimum, twice a year, possibly three times a year, this would be a great event to host annually at City Hall, like I said, a few times a year. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, and we handed the flyer that you see on the screen out to every person that came through, just reminding them that residents can request up to three bulky item collections per year, and they get two items included in each pickup at no charge. Bulky item collection consists of items such as furniture, mattresses, appliances, barbecues, and electronic waste, just to name a few items. Non-acceptable items as part of bulky item collection are construction waste, automotive parts, batteries, and other hazardous waste. We do our bulky item collections on Tuesdays and Wednesdays by appointment only. So we just ask that you call the landfill office at the general number 510-0240, or you can email Adriana directly. She checks her email regularly throughout the day at adriana t at crrmail.com, and she can schedule that for you. So the other thing I wanted to talk about was something we do is a waste characterization. And we did it specifically on all the recyclables that we bring back to the mainland. So the ones that go in the cart with the blue lid. We conducted this audit back in August of 2023, and the purpose of the audit is to identify the different types of recyclable material and also non-recyclable materials that show up in the waste stream. And so we did a sampling of 12 bales. And just to show you a picture on the screen, I hope you could see it well. This is a picture of our state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art material recovery facility, also known as a MRF, where if I was there, I would highlight it for you and show you the conveyor belts where all these recyclables go by. And we actually have employees that stand at the top and pull their different types of items off into these bays below that fall into the bunkers. And after they do that, the recyclables are sorted, baled, and then marketed for their end-of-life use, which they get turned into new recyclable items. So I hope you can read this chart. I tried to blow it up as big as I could. So walking you through here, on the left-hand side, you'll see commodity type. And as I mentioned, we want to see the type of recyclables that we're collecting. And so they're broken out by aluminum, tin. The first two items are different types of plastic. As you see on the bottom of recyclable items, they'll have numbers one through seven. And then glass, newspaper, mixed paper, cardboard. And then it shows our total recycling. And so out of the 12 bales, we sampled 200 pounds of material from each bale. So just over 2,500, or, or, which equals almost a little over a ton of recyclable material we audited. And what we found is 50% of the, there was 51% of recycling, but also 45% of trash and a little over 3% of organic. So obviously, from these totals, you could see that there's some improvement, which will regularly come from increased outreach and education, just reminding people what goes into what cart. And so I do have some photos. This is the good. So as you can see from the photos, starting from the left, we get a lot of plastic bottles. We get a lot of aluminum cans. We get a lot of mixed paper and cardboard. And the picture to the top right is tin, which is also known as your vegetable cans. And ironically, in this photo, I thought it was interesting, but makes sense because we did this audit in August, a lot of sunscreen aerosol cans, which is great. Once they're empty, they should, they should go into the recycle cart. So I thought that was nice to see. What we did see, when we talk about trash that ended up, which was 45% of our recycling, is we see a lot of textiles, meaning carpet, shoes, clothing, a lot of plastic bags, just general stuff that shouldn't be in there. We recommend, and I'll talk about a little bit later, later, is not bagging recyclables, which is a lot of where this, this trash is coming from. And then we found a lot of yard organic waste. And it could be that folks were confused. It could be if they didn't have the container, maybe they thought, okay, they'll do it and they'll recycle it on the back end. But those are some of the trash items that we identified when we did these audits. So the next step in the process is, obviously, our overall goal is to reduce the amount of recyclables that are still going into the trash, which in turn is filling up the landfill and doing additional recycling outreach, as I mentioned, to reduce the amount of trash that's showing up in the recycle carts. I'd like to share is one of the things that I noticed was the blue bags. And so it's really important that we don't bag recyclables with a plastic bag, but it is okay to use paper bags to collect your recyclables. And the paper bag would be good to go into the recycle cart. And again, that's only going to get out if I provide that additional education and outreach to the residents. So the flyer that you see to the right is our What Goes Where flyer that is in English and in Spanish. So we will be sending this out in March, hopefully early March. I'm hoping by March 10th. Doing it through the direct door mail program with the post office. So they'll put one automatically in every single post office box, not doing the mail process. I think, as you all know, we've had some issues with mail not showing up at all, showing up three months later than when we mailed it. So I'm, we're shifting to what they call the EDDM process, where the postmaster will automatically put one in every single mailbox. We're gonna do it in a postcard size, so it's something that could maybe be tossed in a junk drawer for reference later or put on the side of the refrigerator. And then this flyer also is available at City Hall for reference for anyone that comes in. And I know they come in on a regular basis to pick up stickers for their carts, pails. All this material is also available at City Hall. So with that, that concludes my presentation. But I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
I have two. Is that a picture of our MRF?
That, no, that is our MRF here in Stanton. That is, that is CRNR's MRF. So once all the material comes back on the barge, that comes here to our, our facility in Stanton.
Okay, I mean, I'm dead in ours, and I was gonna say, that looks awfully clean.
And this is really big.
Yeah.
Much bigger.
Okay, secondly, on one of the things that I have at home, it says shoes and clothing.
Yes.
Where do those go?
So shoes and clothing, obviously, we always want to recommend, if there's an opportunity to donate, whether it's donate back to the church or set up a separate process. And I believe, we've talked about this in the past, to set up some sort of a textile recycling. But after, after used or there's nowhere to donate it, unfortunately, it would go in the trash. But it is something, I know we've talked about, is to possibly do a textile clothing collection program. And that stuff I could have barged back over here, and we would donate it to Goodwill. So that's something that we could look at and coordinate.
But basically, you're saying that goes in the landfill?
It goes into the landfill, goes into the trash if there's not someone that it could be donated to that could use those items.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Mary did want me to ask a question. She said, do you take all the recyclables, one through seven? And if not, which ones do you take?
We take them all.
Take them all, thank you.
And if you look at the spreadsheet that I shared, we count those towards the city's diversion. So it says PET, HDPE, and other mixed plastics, and those are one through seven.
Thank you. I am curious, though, about the textile recycling.
All right, how do we not have a program?
Yeah, is, can we partner with someone, Salvation Army, some one of the sorts? Because I know there's been a lot of talk of that.
There's also that give-back box that I sent some stuff over. And they, you can tell, you can tell them who you want to give it to, or you can just say, here, take it. And it was free to ship it to the, free to ship it to the mainland. So that's one, but there are probably others. But go ahead.
Yeah, we're happy, I'm happy to work with Jocelyn on that. Like I said, we're, we're already shipping material back on a regular basis. So I, we don't mind putting it on the barge and then, you know, taking it to a local, either Salvation Army or Goodwill. But we can talk through that further if you already have a program or someone that's expressed interest on wanting to participate with the city of Avalon as well.
Great.
Julie?
On that note, Rotary is sponsoring a clothing drive, clothing drive, March and April. We haven't picked a date yet, but we will let you know. But we're planning on doing that, so.
For textiles that are not able to be donated, Julie, is there a program that CRNR has throughout your organization to do textile recycling? And is that something we can look at?
Definitely, we can look at that, Lisa. So what we do is, yeah, we, we set up in other cities. We kind of set up a date where we say, on this date, put out your textiles. We'll keep them separate. We'll have them in an enclosed container. We have what we refer to as a storage box. That way, they're enclosed and covered so that the items aren't damaged via weather or just coming back on the barge. But definitely, kind of like we did for the HHW event, we could set something up. Perhaps we could have a container like, we do this like for public, not disposal, public recycling. We could set up our event boxes, whether it's in the library, the post office, City Hall. We can spread them out. People can periodically, maybe we pick a month that says recycle your, you know, your unwanted clothing. And then we leave them out for a month, and then we can ship them back and bring them over. And then I can report back to you on the weight and where the materials went. But we can definitely set something up for that.
Right.
Okay. And then another question. I had, I could have sworn that in a previous discussion, you had said that if you had compostable bags, that those were recyclable bags, those were okay to use for recycling. Is that not the case?
No, that is true. The bags that you could see in those photos were definitely like the very thick hefty bags, but they're, they were solid blue. So, but yeah, compostable is, is completely okay. And Lisa, you know the difference because most compostable bags are somewhat transparent. You could see through them.
Okay. And then a question on businesses and also in looking inward at our trash results as well. We don't have anything currently that separates out organic waste from recyclable and trash waste in the public receptacles around town yet. Is that something that we're moving towards, looking at?
I believe we have a couple on order that we're still waiting to get here.
Okay. So that was one of the questions. And then are businesses now required to use recycling bins as well? Has that moved? I know that they've had organic waste for a long time for businesses, but is the recycling portion of it in action and being completed that you've seen?
They are, they are. We still, to your point, we still see some blue bags or orange bags are popping up. So when we see those, we're doing some outreach. We now have a manager that's over on the island three, two to three days a week. And when the drivers see that, he does a follow-up and goes out and meets with them. His name is Ken Robbins, and he's been great at doing a lot of customer interaction and meeting with them and explaining to them the reasons of why we want to keep everything separate and not bagged. But overall, it's been going very well.
Okay. And then has, did we end up having a discussion about pricing for adding back in an additional day of trash service? I'm, Upper Marilla and Upper Whitley are still seeing the same over-trash filling that we've been seeing this whole time since we switched to fewer days of, even though it's the same number of days, fewer days of certain types of pickup? Is that something that's been discussed or reviewed yet for pricing?
I know we discussed it. I don't know if we received any pricing back yet, but we, we have discussed that as it relates to those areas in particular and also to Saturdays as it relates to the short-term rentals.
Okay. If we can, Julie, if we can get that info sooner rather than later, just so we can try to address that before summer. I know we may not have it for spring break in time, but before summer, it needs to be addressed. And it's becoming, it's, it's an issue every couple of days on those streets where the bins are overfull and there's not enough space around the buildings to put more bins out. It needs to be addressed. It can't not be addressed.
I'll get with Jocelyn on that tomorrow.
Thank you guys very much.
And if there are businesses that are not separating their trash or doing anything, should I just mention the names to Jocelyn? Okay.
And she also has code enforcement going out on a regular basis.
Because I know there's not 100% compliance, that's for sure. But, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Julie, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Stay dry.
Goodbye.
Bye-bye.
Are you gonna need this for us to see anything?
Yes, Southern California Edison.
Oh, okay. Southern California Edison is next.
Jamie is coming up there to set you up here.
Yeah, wait for it to load up. Thank you.
Can you smell the chocolate?
I need that away from me. I'm going to die. I gave up sweets for my tongue. I consider you the best.
Good evening, Mayor Marshall and members of the City Council. Selena Luna, Government Relations Manager at Southern California Edison. It gives me great pleasure to be here tonight to provide you with a few updates, to introduce our acting district manager, provide you an update on the recent water general rate case decision, and to provide you an update on Catalina's desalination enhancement efforts. I'd like to kick it off with a very special guest this evening. We have Anthony Hernandez, the Director of Catalina Operations and Strategy here. And Anthony, we'll kick it off from here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. Happy to be here today. Thank you for the time. As Selena mentioned, we've got a lot of topics that we want to share with you. Wanted to take this opportunity, though, to share a key staffing update with you. If, if you are aware, maybe you're not, Ron Height, our Production Manager, has recently retired on January 18th after 35 years of service. So if you see him, congratulate him and move it on to the next chapter in his life. We understand that this role is key to the island and coordination with many of you all. So as part of that, what we wanted to share is the interim lead for production operations, which is Jay Martin. So Jake can head over. Wanted you to have a face with the name. And I'll allow Jay to introduce himself before we get into the next topics.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Some of you may know me already. A little bit about me. I've been working with Southern California Edison since 1990. I started off my career at Mojave Generation Station in La Fosa, Nevada. I was there till about 2006, till I came to Catalina at that time. And I've been working here at Pebble Beach Generation Station ever since then. So really glad to be able to help everybody out here. And if you guys have any information that you need from me, please let me know. And if you do not have my contact information, please, I will provide it to you. So feel free to.
We don't.
I can provide this right after this meeting. Any questions for me?
Congratulations.
Yes, so you'll be, you'll be on those Monday calls that you have with the
What's that?
So those Monday calls that we have with the city manager, and I'm in attendance, and those you'll be, you'll be the man?
Yep.
Okay, great, Jay. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Ryan Stevenson. I work for Southern California Edison. I'm part of the Regulatory Affairs Group. And I've been the case manager with the Catalina Water GRC for about the last year. And I'm here to give you an update, um, on that proceeding.
We haven't seen you in a while, it's nice to see your face.
It's very nice to be back. How do I do this? So we filed the application in October of twenty twenty. Normally, an application, um, takes about eighteen months. This one had a lot of issues, and there was a lot of litigation, heavily litigated. And we received a decision in December. Our proposal was a, a pretty decent increase of a nine point three million revenue, which was a hundred and twenty-five percent increase over the previously authorized. However, we also requested to recover approximately thirty million, about twenty-nine million from electric customers. So this was an electric subsidy. And that was the, um, the biggest issue in the case, was this electric subsidy. The commission did not agree with that subsidy, so they denied it. Instead, what they did was, um, they also disallowed certain costs of some of our capital costs, some reductions, uh, in O and M. And it resulted in a revenue of about ten point five seven million. And they came up with a very novel, um, kind of rate-making cost recovery method. And so they phased it in over five years. But also, as part of that phase in, um, they only phased in a portion of that. And so, um, an amount would be accumulated and then be recovered over fifteen years. And then in addition to that, uh, we had, um, a large amount of costs in our memo accounts from the drought, from our lost revenue memo account, as well as drought, drought costs. Had a, a good size reduction in that, but the commission authorized, uh, about four point two million, four point three million in recovery. And there, again, they ordered us to recover that over ten years, beginning in twenty twenty-six. And so this results in the first table where you see the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine, uh, with the phase in of the increase up to five point five million, which is about thirty-four percent revenue increase. Increases up to seven point seven, and then continues to increase until you get to, um, twenty twenty-nine. And that is small increases thereafter out to the year twenty forty. The, um, the average customer bills will be increasing. And for twenty twenty-four, we represent, uh, three of the customer categories. So you have a five-eight inch meter for residential, this is our largest residential class, about, um, eleven hundred customers. And their, um, current average bill is about sixty-eight dollars per month, and will go up to about ninety-three dollars per month, which is roughly about a thirty-six percent increase for twenty twenty-four. Uh, residential care, there's a much smaller portion in this group, about a hundred and forty customers. And their increase will be about fifteen percent for twenty twenty-four. And then the commercial, this is our largest commercial class, uh, at five-eight inch again, and they'll see a twelve percent increase, uh, in twenty twenty-four. And the rate increase is anticipated to begin March first, uh, twenty twenty-four. There any questions?
I should have a little one. So let's say you're going along twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, when is the next time you can put an increase into the PUC?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. We're not on any particular schedule to have to file a rate case, uh, unlike on the electric side, we're on a mandatory, uh, four-year schedule. It's something that we need to look at and consider. Uh, one of the things that was, um, recommended in the decision by the commission was to look at, um, alternative, um, revenue options and to explore those and to act on them prior to the next GRC. Uh, so the commission, um, they were obviously concerned about large rate increase. Uh, they authorize in the investments because they knew that they had to be made. And they want us to start looking at alternative, uh, revenue sources to try to reduce these rates over time. So we don't have a date yet.
I mean, like what? What could be a possible suggestion?
Twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine. Uh, so in the interim, we'll be filing annual advice letters, um, to update on escalation rates and things like that, the sales forecast. And also, uh, the commission, this decision, uh, authorized some capital projects, but only when they go into service. And so once they go into service, then we make, um, what's referred to as an advice letter filing, that's much smaller than a rate case, it's one or two particular issues. And we request recovery of those particular costs. And so we anticipate doing that, um, this year, next year, and then planning to see when we can do the next rate case.
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I just was, what were they thinking of suggestions in which you can generate additional revenues? Sell in bottled water or?
Uh, so, um, one of the reasons this, uh, GRC took a long time was, uh, they ordered an independent study to be done on, uh, alternative revenue sources. And that has a number of options. Uh, one of the ones that the commission encouraged us to further look at, something that we've talked about many times in the past, is the boat fee. And that's because the commission regulates the rates of the, uh, the boats that come over here.
Oh, I see, okay.
But there are other, um, alternatives as well, and so we want to explore all of those.
Okay. Yeah, that was just an example, thank you, Ryan, yeah. Any other questions of this por- portion?
So you have the increase, though, just for the first year up there on the average customer bill?
Yeah, we haven't, that's what we filed with the commission, it's, we're planning on implementing the rates March first, we filed the advice letter. The ones for twenty twenty-five and beyond, those are forecasted, they'll be updated with updated escalation rates, they'll be updated sales. So for example, uh, the sales forecast for this year is close to a hundred and sixteen million gallons. And we will, um, have an updated forecast next year based on what we actually record this year. And so once we, um, are further along in, um, this year, when we file that advice, they will have better information on escalation rates, sales, to then calculate the proposed, um, rates for twenty twenty-five.
So if the percentages follow, though, what the increase is looking like for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine, what would the sixty-eight dollar rate be in twenty twenty-nine?
I think if you just do the, um, the absolute increase on revenue, um, from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine, it's about two hundred percent. And so that's, the previously authorized revenue is four point one three, we're gonna get up to twelve point six, so that's about a two hundred percent increase. And, uh, we could see, uh, that level of increase in the bills.
So that would be like, uh, what's that, two oh four?
So that would be like, multiply that by three, so a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty, plus twenty-four, about a little of two hundred dollars on average.
Yeah, that sucks.
I know that you guys offer a couple of programs to help, um, your customers with discounts.
If they make a dress low enough money.
Yeah, have you guys considered, um, possibly doing one just for Catalina residents? Because I know a lot of us are working two, three jobs at a time, so if we apply for your program, it looks like we're making all this money, when in reality, you know, we're still struggling.
Councilor De La Rosa, I really appreciate you bringing that up, that was how I was going to end this, um, presentation. I am currently working with the Care and Fairer team, I'm asking for them to make literature specific to the island that covers all three utilities, and in making a comprehensive plan for them to return and work with the city on the best events for us to be present at, to meet the residents where they're at.
Okay, that's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I would add to that, that, uh, the care discount rate was increased, uh, as part of this decision, uh, from twenty percent to approximately thirty-two and a half. And then also, um, there's a lot of other issues, um, beyond just the rate increase that were litigated in this case. And on the low-income aspect, the commission ordered us, uh, to look at a number of other different, um, low-income, um, programs and to provide those to customers, so they basically ordered us to do this in bills every June. So every year, we have to, um, provide information to all of our customers on a number of other low-income programs, um, that could be available to them.
I know that, um, a lot of our community are low-income, but it seems like they're not, so that's my only concern.
Yeah, like I mentioned, I think we have about on, um, and this is our largest category of care, residential customers, about a hundred and forty. And I think we have about overall, you know, fourteen hundred residential accounts somewhere around that neighborhood. And so that's, um, it's about only ten percent that are signed up for it.
All right, okay, what's next?
Okay, uh, Luke?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Luke Shaner. I'm a project manager in our Catalina Strategy and Planning Department here. And, uh, let me move forward one slide. Appreciate this opportunity, wanted to use it to just provide you an update on the desal enhancements program. It was actually a year ago that Selena was up here, I was on baby watch, the reservoir was at seven percent capacity, and over twelve months, a lot has happened. Um, so I'm gonna share on the, uh, on the desal side, you know, since it has been twelve months, I have the background. You know, we're focused on desal enhancements to help increase water reliability, drought resiliency on the island. Uh, we completed the desal feasibility study in twenty seventeen, the drought contingency plan in twenty twenty-one, and that helped identify that phase implementation of projects. We're still focused on phase one of that. You see where phase one is in that dotted blue, uh, vertical rectangle in the chart on the bottom left, uh, with plant one being the first step, plant two being that second stair step. And so the next phase of enhancements looks to increase from two-ten acre-feet per year on average to three-seventeen and a half acre-feet per year on average. And we're doing that by looking at increasing the saltwater well capacity, adding a third well next to two existing, also making upgrades to the desal treatment plant. Um, not large-scale upgrades like the plant two project, but increases to increase efficiency, um, increase redundancy, and essentially help us keep the plant on more days of the year, um, more consistently. And then lastly, there is a distribution and storage element to that project. It's the lowest priority of those three items, but still, we're looking to address that, uh, in a capacity on this project. What's happened since we were last here and what we're looking at, uh, you could now shift your focus to the chart on the bottom right. Rows five through eight. What happened last year, row five and row six, we achieved milestone approvals from the coastal development, uh, California Coastal Commission by issuing a coastal development permit, also State Lands Commission approving the lease for the area needed for that third well and some of the shoreline protection needed. And what's up next is, uh, the remaining construction permits, which are waters permits issued from the Army Corps of Engineers and, um, the State Water Control Board, Regional Water Quality Control Board, and also finally, finalizing a wetlands mitigation with low seritos. Uh, we anticipate having those resolved by April. In parallel, working on finalizing the construction design, and we're targeting a mo- construction mobilization of August first. And two primary factors for that, the coastal development permit has a condition to only, uh, conduct shoreline construction activities outside of the gear baldy breeding season, which starts, uh, March first and goes through July thirty-first. And the second part is, if we do have a long-term desal outage, which we expect to incur while we're doing construction, we want to push that off to the off-season or at least shoulder season. So that'll allow us to run up and through Labor Day or have the ability to run. Um, that concludes the update on desal enhancements, um, unless there are.
I just have a question, boy, it seemed like we were hearing that that, the deep-water well has been purchased and it seems like it, and I thought you bought two, am I correct?
Uh, deep-water well.
The, the, uh, the new wells that you were gonna put in?
Yep. Uh, initially, when we had the project at a thirty percent design, we were looking at maximum well development potential, um, adjacent. And there was, it looked at at least up to four additional in the desal feasibility study. But it pared that down to maximize your output with the existing pipeline infrastructure between the wells and the plant, and only one well would do that.
Everything takes so long, doesn't it?
It does.
Okay. Questions? Okay. And how many acre-feet we got in that reservoir?
We're at a hundred percent.
Hundred percent and overflowing.
An overflow, no, crazy.
Wanted to thank you guys for your time this evening. As I stated before, I will be back in the next thirty to sixty days to provide more updates on the Care and Fairer Program for residents and our outreach plan.
Great.
Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Oh, thank you, everyone, thanks for coming, Jay, congrats. Ryan, nice to see you again, Luke always, Anthony. Okay, this is presentation day.
I'll see how quickly I can plug in here, because. Think so.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
You want a break? Oh, oh, I was saying, give us a break. Thank, thank you.
Worked earlier.
Bye.
All right. So, um, good evening.
And Grayson, would you mind closing the door after they've gone, it's getting a little chilly, I think. Thank you, I mean, I, chilly. Stop, stop. Okay, she's cool, good, see, I've gotta take care of you. Okay.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as has been our practice for a little over a year now, we're, um, coming to the council a few times a year, doing quarterly updates on, um, how we're promoting visitation to the island. I've passed out to each of you the quarterly one-sheet, two-sided document, that's a summary document, I have copies over here for anyone in the audience who's interested, and these will go out in this week's Thursday update. And, um, to make Michael happy, I'm just gonna go right to the video, because he likes me to be short and sweet.
As we say goodbye to twenty twenty-three and welcome a new year for Catalina Island, let's take a look at the final quarter's marketing results and get ready for an exciting year ahead. Ready to dive in? First, a look at the big picture. In Q four, we had more than two hundred and forty-nine thousand visitors, which was up for the quarter, mostly from a busy cruise sector. Combined lodging sectors saw their average daily rates increase more than inflation rates for the same timeframe, despite decreases in hotel occupancy and revenue per available room. Our PR team opted themselves this quarter with twenty-two unique pitches, including What's New, Disney Magic, Best of Winter, the fiftieth anniversary New Year's Gala, and monthly pitches for Visit California. This effort resulted in one hundred twenty-three pieces of coverage and an estimated two hundred sixty-four million views. We also upped our social media game and gained more followers across the board, especially on Instagram, where for the second quarter in a row, we had a huge increase, over twenty-five percent. Yeah, Catalina was definitely on people's minds. Maybe it had something to do with our second summer campaign, reminding people that the good times don't end on the island. Or maybe it was our taste this season campaign, which invited people to enjoy a cozy island vacation for the holiday. Our Kind Traveler partnership engaged travelers with a chance to win a trip to Catalina and brought in ten thousand entries, twenty-one thousand site visits, and over two million impressions, giving us an estimated campaign value of nearly thirty thousand dollars. And in marketing news, it was another good quarter. While our total impressions were down from last quarter's summer rush, our programmatic and social campaigns continued to generate buzz. More than eight million impressions, that's a lot of buzz. And both our social and programmatic efforts exceeded industry benchmarks, resulting in over five hundred thousand social engagements. Another one of our Visit California emails was sent out on November fifteenth and was opened by more than half of our targeted audience, which is a big success for emails. This all combined to spread the island cheater to a lot of people, two hundred twenty thousand all total. And a lot of those came from organic searches, meaning people are seeking out more info on Catalina Island. How awesome is that? And we ended the year on a high note. Our New Year's Eve Facebook ads performed exceptionally well, generating seven hundred thousand impressions with a click-through rate more than triple the industry average and led to an early selling out of. and led to an early selling out of the event. Speaking of good news, visitor guide requests, signups for the newsletter and walk-ins to our visitor center all entries. We love seeing that. Well, that's a wrap on this year, and twenty twenty-four is already looking bright. We can't wait to see what the year brings.
Very nicely done.
Thank you. Um, you may have, uh, noticed the background music this time and the little, you know, Catal- Catal- Catalina rephrasing at the end. That is a little preview of some new theme music that we'll be using throughout twenty twenty-four, um, composed and performed by Taimani Gardner, an ukulele artist from Hawaii who has repeatedly been part of our concert series, and we were happy to get to partner with her and bring a little bit of Taimani back to our promotions for the year. And without him, open any questions?
I don't think I have any. The open rate for emails was amazing, so keep, keep it up.
Yeah.
It's great to see.
Well, I just wanna say, I think I only saw Michelle's face just for a little, a little, little second. There was a little second. We love seeing her.
It helps cost-cutting when you don't have to pay for professional models in your phone.
Right, and she's beautiful. I think this is great, and I appreciate you doing this. This is, this is wonderful. Thank you, Jim. And that's a lot of work to put this together, so I appreciate that as well. Okay. Earl Communications, this is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the, on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken.
Sorry, my foot's asleep. Hello, everybody. Paul Birchall, Avalon Library. What I wanna say is my foot's asleep, I kinda envy it. Oh, sorry, terrible thing to say. Uh, thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to remind everybody, we do have the vote by mailbox, actually, in front of the library. It's being emptied every Tuesday by nice people from the voter register recorder's office. I saw them today. They came in the rain, they came on that, on the very bumpy boat, and, uh, they're, they're taking the stuff very seriously and very safely. Uh, coming up this week, I have another visit from the Barnsdale Arts, uh, uh, School. Uh, they're coming out here on Friday, they're going to do a sort of lunar, uh, New Year party, uh, where we're going to make dragon puppets, it's gonna be really fun. Um, uh, then a couple of other programs that I'm bringing over, thanks to our friends in the library group. Uh, we're gonna have the magician Artie Loon coming, uh, in March, uh, and more visits from our science, uh, library staff, the Make Mo team, coming up, uh, the first week of March. Then, in early April, I'm going to have a guy, uh, who calls himself Shanty Man, uh, he's going to do a sea shanty concert, and I'm really excited about that. I think I did that one, cause I really love sea shanties myself, so, uh, I'm looking forward to having him there. By the way, Val, he teaches ukulele, so maybe we might wanna get him for the friends group, teach him the ukulele class? We did that a few years back, that was kinda fun. I still have about twelve ukulele on my desk, so maybe we could go ahead and do, sorry, we're, we're doing a little meeting right here at City Council. Why not, right? Uh, I also, uh, I'm trying to enhance a lot of our sort of literacy-based, uh, things. Uh, once a month, I'm now trying a sort of kids' sort of book party. Uh, this, about a week ago, uh, I did a Fly Guy book party. If any of you are parents with sort of young children, there's a book called Fly Guy, about a fly and his master, who, you know, they're, they're, they're best of friends, even though he's a sort of nasty little fly who eats garbage. Uh, and we did a Fly Guy party, we had a Fly Guy craft, uh, and we all went around and read the story, uh, sort of in a choral read. Uh, this next month, I'm gonna do a first chapter book club. Uh, I tried this out on a class visit I had about a month ago. I read three of the first chapters of the I Survive books, which are books about terrible disasters. Uh, is that two minutes already? Ah, well. Uh, but so anyway, we've got lots of stuff coming on at the library, please do come and, come and, come and visit us.
Thank you. Okay, consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first item, seeking approval of minutes from January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, special city council meeting, and February sixth, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting. Approved total expenditures for January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four through February ninth, twenty twenty-four, totaling one million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. Item three, authorize the city manager or his designate to renew the professional services agreement with Sage Press Planning and Environmental LLC for on-call planning consultant services for an additional one-year term for an annual cumulative total not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Item four, adopt a resolution declaring vehicles and equipment listed in the resolution as surplus property and authorize the city manager to dispose of it in accordance with city policy. And finally, item five, adopt an ordinance to the city of Avalon, amending Title Four, Chapter Four, Article Seventeen, adding the requirement to mark all commercial autoettes, commercial rental autoettes, commercial vehicles, interior commercial vehicles and public service, public health, and safety vehicles with legal name or fictitious business name of the applicant.
I'll move to approve items one through five on consent.
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
I'm just curious.
Four ayes, one absent. Councilmember Schickling?
I'm sorry, I'm just curious logistically about getting these names on, you know, per, how they're gonna do that? That just seems logistically rather difficult. Send them a letter and say, give us your name?
No, during the, during the annual registration process and issuance of the sticker, we'll verify that the, the name is on the vehicle when we issue the sticker.
Oh, because right now, none of those are being done?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
They're not on.
Yeah, okay, so I think, yeah, I should already did three hundred and now, okay, excellent, good, excellent, that's a good idea. Okay, general business?
Thank you. Item six, authorize the city manager or their designate to purchase parts and materials from Shields, Harper, and Company at a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars for the underground fuel tank replacement project.
Any questions? If not, what's the action?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager or their designate to purchase parts and materials from Shields, Harper, and Company at a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars for the underground fuel tank replacement project.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four abs- four ayes, one absent. Councilmember Schickling?
Finally, the last item is authorize PERC to purchase a Weinman pump from the California Electric Motor Source to be used as a spare pump for the Catherine Saltwater Booster Station, allocate funds from the Saltwater Fund, one-one-three-two-five-dash-six-five-five-two, for the procurement in the amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars.
Any questions?
Just a comment, I think it's a great idea that we have a backup.
Yes, there, we're, PERC is doing a great job working with Public Works Department to get that plan up to speed and give us a little bit of protection if something does go down.
Didn't, it's, I'm not being picky at all, but didn't we just also approve another pump the other day?
Uh, for a different pump, yes.
Okay.
We have a lot of pumps around here.
Yeah, okay.
And Jamie can probably add to that.
That was a pump for, I know, it's, it's confusing, that, that was for a pump for the Catherine Sewage Lift Station. So thi- this is a pump for the Catherine Saltwater Booster Station, which provides all the saltwater for the whole town.
Gotcha, okay. We were gonna approve it anyway, I just wanted to. Okay. Does it move and seconded?
We haven't, no.
Oh, you haven't?
I'll ma- I'll make a motion to authorize PERC to purchase a Weinman pump from the California Electric Motor Source to be used as a spare pump for the Catherine Saltwater Booster Station, allocate funds from Saltwater Fund, one-one-three-two-five-dash-six-five-five-two, for the procurement in the amount of not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
I, I have just one question.
I'm sorry, four, four ayes, one absent. Councilmember Schickling?
I, when do we get our little voting these back?
Do we wanna go that route?
Not necessarily, but I was just, you know, it just.
I just think they're adorable.
We'll look into that.
Okay. Is that Pat Grady's department? Or no? Or is it?
Well, we're still waiting on installation, as you know, we're redoing the entire AV system in here, so.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, it's funny that you ha- you used to have to talk into the mic, and now you really don't wanna talk into the mic.
Not too close, right.
Well, thank you all for coming. Meeting adjourned.